We're glad everybody's being here tonight. And, uh, what do I ask Johnny, think we'll leave us on with the prayer for start?
Prayer. Father, we just thank you so much for this day and the blessings Lord has given us. Father, I just thank you for the opportunity that I have to serve this great city of ours, Father. And I just pray that you give us all wisdom and serenity, Lord, as we liberate the business and talk about the business of our city. Father, we are so blessed to live in this country. I pray for protection for our servicemen, Father, and women who are fighting for our freedom, Father, overseas. Or that we pray as we start this new year, Lord, that you would just help us to make good decisions and replace it with you. And I pray you will forgive us for our sins and mistakes in the past, in the future, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
First of all, this is the Fraser family. We're going to, uh, I think I talked to everybody about putting two signs down there in memory of Clinton. And, uh, I guess I need to put it on the books officially. So I need most of them. Most of them Johnny, say, by Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion, please?
Amen.
Any questions? And I want y'all to come up here. We got a plaque for you. You can just stand up, however you want to do it. We had y'all a plaque made, uh, Dr. Mario, who's going to hang it in your house, I guess, but in memory of Deputy Clint Fraser for dedicated services and the guys in the watches on here. But we saw it for whatever, and we appreciate everything y'all still do for us. So we'll give it to them. Look at him. He won't know if I ain't going to make his feet.
I'm not good talking.
I couldn't either. Uh, okay. On a personal prayer, forget Mr. Jerry Kinble, first.
Man, I tell you what, that's good out there. Don't worry. Of course, most of you aware that I, Liam fell out of the tree there that failed him cut and done some damage to my trunk. You know, I hate being up here, but I need to come see all y'all do.
I'll see you again in a bit.
Y'all get y'all's copies that I gave you.
I got, uh, I know copies passed down, but yeah, I did right here.
It's two different.
Two different things.
Yeah, I'm going to have to bend over. Everybody got copies? Uh, if you don't mind, I'm going to have to pass this cell phone around, so I'll cut it off. This is the trunk before Liam fell out. And then I got a copy, uh, my daughter didn't take pictures of Liam, so I'll tell you. Right here is the, uh... Right there is Liam that hit the trunk. See it up close, it was that, the tail was solid.
We spoke earlier today, you didn't have pictures of that.
Well, my daughter had, she said it's lit. She's a fanatic with a camera, so. You got two copies there. Low bid, it's up nine hundred something dollars. That's a pay for y'all's luck, I hope. Some one of them real high, and I couldn't go with that.
Is it Lee's problem, Jerry? Can you go home?
Yes, uh, he's a good guy, he's a sentient person. Red, is it Rick here?
Red, Rick. Yeah, he's in the... Well, we want to say he's...
No, it was Kenny.
Do you know which one, two?
Uh, that and Red, Rick, and Mr. Kenny, so.
I got a bunch of things under that, about a second thing.
All right, gentlemen, I thank y'all.
Thank you.
Y'all behave.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if the phrase, I would like to say the rest of me, but yeah, I wouldn't, but y'all win.
Just talking about that. I thank y'all. It's good seeing you, good seeing you.
Well, that...
We need to talk to you. Mind your way or you're... Hold back, please.
Hold on, put y'all...
Can I get a picture? You're fine.
Will it show you? What I need back up, turn to the other side. Picture.
All right, next one on the year, for the parent material.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure to see if y'all had been sent a copy of the draft or the conference plan arrived on. I noticed an email advisory group that had been sent in y'all. I just want to make sure that they got it sent to y'all. And if it hadn't, if y'all would like to have a copy of it sent to you. They've given us until the 10th to, uh, for a comment period after our request of there be a comment period on it, because they weren't going to take this and just present it to y'all without that period. But we have until January 10th, the advisory board does, to make comments on this. And I just thought, noticing that y'all didn't get it, that it might be something that y'all might want to take a look at and put y'all's comments in there as well, just to keep from getting the next month's meeting and y'all have any questions that we could have taken care of in this particular comment period. So if y'all have it, I think I got most of y'all's emails, but if not, I'll...
I don't guess any of them got it. I didn't check.
It's doing a really good job. Um, I think I saw y'all's name on there, so, um, I'll try and get all their, it out. But if not, if y'all don't get one, um, they got it. I just, uh, I thought it'd be a good thing for y'all to review along with us, and I didn't see y'all on the mountain, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to park metal business. Looks like we lack gas and water. Drew the leg, y'all.
And I'm hoping to find some of these, if I can, put some of these in one, but I like to do all the tech requests. Uh, the first one, again, this is on the Marshall County Gas Job, and they're sending us $5,000 for grant money. And we approve all pay requests one month, and they go through and see how much grants on to buy back, and they send that money back to us. So first one is the grant money coming back to us. The second for U-Banks is, uh, $18,813 for their work during the month of December. Uh, number three is for Buzz Plaxico, $20,404, that's for their work in December. Uh, on this Marshall County Gas Job, we are nearing the end on that. We hope to already have all that wrapped up in December, but we hope in tomorrow, I'd actually have gas on the gate station up there, and we'll be able to serve the customers. So thankfully, we haven't had that much cold weather, so the end is here on that project, and hopefully in January, play every... This, I don't know, the four, uh, in Three Rivers is the grant administrator, so they have to send us the money that we turn around and pay them the $5,000 back. That's just the draws they have set up to get that to the grant. Uh, on number ten, five and six, those are the invoices regarding, uh, work on the wastewater treatment plant. So the first phase, we're installing the line from the, or what would be the pump section of the existing plant to the new side. Uh, and that work, uh, I think today they didn't put a pipe in the ground, so that's infield construction doing that work. And now they're out there concentrating on the, um, on actual lift station, you know, of the wastewater up to the new sides. That, that, that's really well right on schedule. That, uh, infield, $414,173, and a pay request from Engineering Solutions for their engineering work on it, $27,207. Item number seven is for killing contractors. This is an electrical contractor. They helped us on the coal per drive job, they did the relocation of holes there. We had a two-year labor and equipment contract with them. You know, we have an overall electric system project that was getting ready to mine off, started this year, the next couple of months, we'll be bringing that to you. Uh, there were different phases of work we wanted to do. One was some line reconstruction near the existing association across the high school. And this is, we went ahead and got them to start doing that part of the work, so again, this is just part of that overall plan, but since we had them under contract, we went ahead and get this job done while we could. So their pay request is $40,223.70. And we do have an engineer review of all these pay requests to make sure that, you know, they matched the contract and all, you know. We have inspectors on the side, so we have a lot of comments that all, um, requests are valid and true.
All right, one through seven. One through seven, what we doing at work? I got most of my, to the first, I have a second one. Anything, or will, any other question or discussion, only favor?
Hi.
This item A, uh, we have been, it was last month or two months ago, we had to pay it last month. We had an emergency situation at our Wellspring substation where we had a transformer that had an issue in Lake Small, and we had to do, uh, some, I guess, had to decide, clean up, and then get the transformer fixed. Uh, y'all declared an emergency boards on last week, go ahead and get the work done. Uh, the group that did the work, uh, is Clean Harbors out of Memphis. Uh, they submitted two invoices to us, amount of $91,570. That was for the removal of the, uh, the contaminated rock and earth in the area that they had to actually, I guess, had to incinerate it. Uh, so that, that's for the disposal of the contaminated area. Then Utility Maintenance Company is the group that came in and actually did work on the transformer, get it back to service. And we have two invoices with an amount of $20,601. And Greg, do they need to approve? I know they can come back and update them to let us know.
Yeah, they've already approved it, but you're just required to...
Yeah.
Tell what purchase amount was and what's...
Yeah, there's work in the limits of what has to work in front of you.
Yeah.
So show action on that.
No, no, okay.
Uh, the next item, we have, uh, another situation on one of our wells, the West and Take well, out on the west side of town. Uh, we started noticing vibration at the top of the well a couple of months ago, losing capacity on the well. So we shut it down, had a group come in to evacuate, waited. It's Donald Smith Company out of Shannon. They, they have done this kind of work for us before, had to pull the well and, uh, I guess the value components. The well's a little 25 years old and never had any kind of trouble out of it. Uh, but apparently what's happened, there's a, of course, the motor sits on top of the well. There's a shaft that goes down about 400 feet to the water table. There's a pump there. Uh, that shaft is full of, it's got bearings about every 10 feet, is what turns the pump to bring the water up. Uh, the shaft needs to be replaced, the pump needs to be replaced, the casing going down to the water table needs to be replaced. It's really just an overhaul of the well. And again, this happens about every 25 or 30 years. It's about something that you never really see things happen, but now we've got the well out of service. Uh, and it does not really create a, just that one well being out is not a problem, but if we lose another well, then we're going to be really tight on water. And I guess I talked with our auditor to kind of see how he thought we ought to proceed, and he felt like this would be another emergency type situation to go ahead and get a repair done to this well. Again, the company, uh, just give us a quote against Donald Smith Company, they're going to quote repair, uh, make repairs, 67,579. And that is, you had to do this about three or four years ago, another well, and that's pretty close to what it costs. So again, feel good about the quote, not do that, go ahead and make a repair.
Probably didn't need to pull the throttle on that one. Got most of Johnny's sake, man. Oh, we got a quick Thursday.
Uh, it's preventative, right? More preventative?
Well, no, it's probably shut down. We're not able to use the well.
Not able to use it?
Yeah, we're losing fast, it's kind of a blow on the engine.
Sorry, got it.
Now, any other questions, Chris? Only favor? Any of both, and most of carries.
Items 10, we'll have them kind of go together. We, we had did the, uh, actual construction of the wastewater treatment plant. Yes, you know, the first phase, it already approved and the head field is working on. This is the line to go from existing plant to the new side. Uh, what we did back in October was actually construct the, the new wastewater plant. Uh, and we were pretty concerned that, you know, based on our early estimates on the job, that when everything came in, we'd, it would be real, real tight all month. And the biz did come in a little bit above our initial budget. Uh, there were, there were a couple of others, projects we wanted to do in addition to the plant. One, getting this pipe out of the river, basically taking the Moss Hill Drive as a sewer code from there at the west side of town, send it that straight to the plant side. Uh, the new sewer truck, and then the Carter Street substation needs to be rebuilt. So we got with, uh, Engineering Solutions and, you know, looked at the overages from the, uh, from the plant, including these projects with a little bit of contingency money. And we needed about 1.25 billion in additional funds to complete the project. So we requested USDA to, you know, see if we could borrow the money. They already give, they issued all the grants they're going to give us, so they had to go back to approval of a lot of the money boards, which we got the letter of conditions from them, in this case, in number 14 and 15, which we'll jump to in just a second. So we did get approval from USDA to get extra money. And the good news in all of this is, when we first started talking about the, this plant project interest rate was up to 3%, with this new money, now the rate's down to 2.2, 2.25%. So even with borrowing the additional money, the financials will still work on the project due to the lower interest rates. So if we get all this money committed, kind of about mid-year, in second, third, four, we'll get this lower interest rate, so there won't be any financial impacts as far as like our monthly payment, just to, just to break it down on those kinds of nerves. But I guess jumping back up to, we're going to 10 and 11. Uh, and that's, that's the B. summary that I, that I passed out here. We had, can you watch it? We had six different companies bid on the project. Uh, we went with the, uh, plant design of 4 million. Gallon processing on a normal day, 8 billion, and during storm or rain events. KJAC's construction was a low bid, 10B, $600,000. Be a franchise all the way up to 13B, $260,000. Uh, after we determined KJAC was a low bidder, we had to help it with this spread, but we did get with them on a couple of design items, they were able to offer and take another $250,000 out of the project. So I guess what number, number 10 is to award the bid to KJAC's construction, and then we, because it, I guess, 10B and 600,000 official bid, then they developed a deductive change order for 250,000 that will sensible or depress the plant down to 10B and 350,000. And we were just trying to squeeze all the money out that was good, just when you were asked to go back and ask your money, we're trying to, uh, get the price of the plant down as much as we can do it. So I think number 10 and 11 have to kind of go together, awarding, uh, the bid to KJAC's construction in the public local Missouri. They're the group that's doing the work on the, or they've constructed the rigging plant, so we have some local knowledge of them, that they are a good contractor. And then number 11 is their change order, uh, to take 250,000 as their bidding price.
Should maybe make sure it's in the minutes that we reward contract fee.
Contract fee, yes, all, it's all in the bid.
Offered.
Yep. And then the change order, 250,000.
What number are you guys?
We're number 10 and 11, so we go together.
I got most of Johnny, I have a second. Same with Kevin Dale. Any other question or discussion, only favor? Any of both, and most carries.
If we can jump down to 14 and 15, that, that kind of talks about the USDA issued that a few months ago. Again, we did get approval to, uh, to borrow their money, and to do that, we are, again, they have a new letter, letter of conditions we have to sell. And then we have to go back and, um, there's some work the bond attorneys have to do, so now they change the issue amount of USDA bonds, so there's work they have to do on that. So 14 and 15 kind of go together, Greg and you.
All I think I have to say is that, uh, things can be done right now, like separate bond, but obviously it's, this is sort of a supplement to the other. But Brad said, after closing, they'll be rolled into one bond.
Yeah, when they're all really good, we can take advantage of the lower interest rate that, I guess, every six months.
Is it every six months or three months, Greg?
I don't know. Maybe every three months, the government, the federal government sets those interest rates, and if we got a great interest rate right now, then hopefully we'll be setting for that interest rate.
Most of Kevin Dale saying Miami to approve. Any other questions or discussions, only favor? Any of both, and most carries.
I did, I'll play jump 13 real quick, the property purchase update. Again, I don't play any big secret words. We were able to close the deal on the Fred's building, December 31st, which was good for us, because if we'd waited a day, we'd have, I guess, been in the other owner's name from January 1st, with property taxes for next year. So we got it closed out. By the end of the year, uh, we're starting some preliminary mitigation work so we can begin, you know, full construction on the building. I guess our next big step is to, uh, get a, get an architect to, uh, to work with us, and I think we're going to be preparing requests or qualifications, and I'll give the page here in the next couple of weeks, to make sure we, you know, if y'all, if y'all have any interests you want to put in there, we'll get that in, and hopefully within another month or so, couple of months, we can have somebody, uh, very much comfortable with to work with on the renovation of the building. But again, I, Chris may have different opinions, but I think we're all really excited about the, makes a good plan and look forward to having the renovation done and getting the bid.
Yes, thanks, Chris.
Uh, the last thing I have is, uh, approval, do you hire, uh, there's personally one of us hired Andy Diller. Uh, I'd like to bring him on part-time, starting in January, he'd be full-time, he may, he could be for an administrative position in our office.
Now, most of Johnny, I have a second, Miami, any other questions or discussions, only favor? Any of both, and most carries. Hey, B., you may want to compare, I know it's 4 million, 8 million or 2 million, what was our old, when we got down?
Well, the word, on a normal day, we process a billion to a billion and a half gallons a day, and we can go up to 3 billion gallons a day, but that, that's top, that's even in storm mode. That's why we have all the lagoons out there at the existing plant, because when it rains a lot, we just kind of warehouse the water, for lack of a better term. So we have to store it out there, and then when we get to the lower flow day, going to 10 and 1/2 gallons, then we could run 3 to 3 and 1/2 to get all the storm water out. So on the new plant, you know, when we get the big rains, we get the big amounts of water in, we won't have to worry about storing water. We can go store mode, and it'll process the waters, we can go ahead and, and release it.
Process up to 8 million?
Yeah, 8 million, almost.
No lagoon, just a new plant?
There'll be one lagoon in there. But for some reason, if we, if we did grow that storm water, and again, you know, one of our goals is just to try to mitigate the storm water, the, uh, the inflow and infiltration water, what we call it, so we don't, you know, cut down on that over time. Uh, but if we did get to a point where the storm water was causing some trouble, we've got plenty of room out there to add lagoons. If we did, they start warehousing some water out there, but it would be out there, it wouldn't be at the whole site, because that pump station will handle, what, 10B a gallon a day?
Uh, 7,000 gallons a minute.
Yeah, that's a bunch. We shouldn't have a bottleneck there.
All right, thank you. Minutes of vote.
I emailed you my report earlier. I do have this update on the National Park Service and their visit to New Albany. Yesterday, Josh Tucker confirmed that he will be in New Albany, February the 20th and 21st, and I will get an email out to you guys. He wants to meet with you about the development of the Little Tallahatchie. He wants to walk the park along the river, and he wants to go down to the Tanglefoot Trail and look for educational opportunities that maybe the National Park Service can help us in those three areas with funding and with just maybe some guidance on improving those three things. So, um, he'll be here for two days, but, um, that was confirmed yesterday, so I'm not going to email out to you yet, but that's February the 20th and 21st. Bob Barber was in town to meet with the advisory group only. Uh, it was to do, um, comments for the final documentation that he will present to the mayor and board of Alderman at a later date. So he, um, the advisory board has till Friday to make comments. He'll roll that up into a document, and then I will present that to you guys, and then he will set a meeting up to explain everything. So that's the Bob Barber thing. Um, I would like to ask for approval to move forward with the Linda Conley Memorial Triangle on Highland Street and Faulkner Way. Um, the plans to dedicate that area to Linda, her service to, um, New Albany, as well as the screening of the maintenance camp now and, um, trees at the VNA Bank and Thames Complex. Uh, I think Jeff gave y'all an update, that we had some donations to that project as well. And then, um, some tree planting at Central Park and the community center, according to the design that y'all have on your desk.
My only question on the design for the community center, and I mentioned it to the mayor, I just want to make sure, Tracy, with the playground, that we're, it's not going to interfere with any of that, it goes with all that.
Yes.
That's just my only question. I think it looks fab, it's going to look fabulous.
I got most of Kevin Dale to approve, I have a second. Say, Miami, any other questions or discussions, only favor? Any of both, and most carries. All right, thank you. Police Department Chief?
I don't have anything on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Fire Department Chief?
No, I don't think we have anything either.
Okay, thank you. Probably have you, huh? He looking a lot better, ain't he? You see? I mean, I, man, go as far as saying you look good. You look a whole lot better than you did, I mean. Oh, all right, Bill Inspector, there you go, got anything?
No.
I like to say that. You got your turkey, you.
I emailed you our report. We had a zoning meeting last night, a request from Willie Paul Pumpke at 11 and 14 Rosewood to split an oversized lot, a little single family home, it's approved. And to sell the ex-land, that excess, we could take it out there.
I guess, it came through the police department.
Yes, it was, it came through the police department, seizure, and then it was given to the city through the police department, so, like, like Gallo's or attached up that you want to do.
Well, how you think the new settlement, Doug got up?
Get a bigger, something better.
I see, Jeff. Most of Johnny, I have a second, Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussions, only favor?
Hi.
Solid, yeah.
You have to do each thing else on that block, or...
Okay, return to the facts. Uh, routine, routine agenda, there are six items on it that we approved, but, but we approved them all at once. Oh, Air Force Building. Okay. All right, everybody on A, B, C, and D?
Well, C and D are... So A and B?
And then it's for last, or November, the paint job, producer. Got all of that. I got most of Johnny. I got a bunch of Johnny, I have a second, taking my wheel, any other questions or discussion? Since I'm A, B, C, and D, all in favor? Okay, E is approved, or request for cash. Number nine, from ARC, for the Airport Terminal Building. They were requesting forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy. Much of Miami, say, Kevin Dale. Uh, any other questions or discussion, all in favor? And then out of M, it's approved paper request, uh, for there, for Steel Con for ninety-eight thousand, so much for it. Much of Kevin Dale, I have a second. Any other questions or discussion, all in favor? Any vote. Okay, uh, we've already done C, and we've asked the general, whichever's favorite family. So let's go to item A. Approved resolution for pre-born children to defend, drive, and collect.
I can ask Reagan to, uh, there was municipal statement, City Pearl, that has done this. And, um, I had had a request that we do that here in New Albany, and I just, I'd actually, uh, heard a resolution. I sent that to all board members back in New Year. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to...
I got a bunch of Johnny, I have a second. Saying my wheel, any other questions or discussion, all in favor? And out of B is to extend the moratorium, we said, don't bother with questions till they get through with the, uh, I guess, the, the, at least the land use amount. But, uh, he, he's had to extend that again for... How long will we need to extend this? Sixty to ninety days?
Yeah, I'm not sure what their update on time is.
Well, I, I don't, it's gonna be the, I would say, the first couple of weeks.
I don't think sixty to ninety would be near enough, I would say six to nine months.
No, at least it early. Do that to six months, stop it.
Okay. All right, we need a motion to do the extended moratorium, Kevin Dale, second, wheel, extended six months. Uh, any other questions or discussions, all in favor? And then the D is to approve municipal court debt collection. And, uh, I think we're going to have to do this, uh, because she got a list of all the names. Yeah, probably, yeah, I got probably.
No, but sure, maybe, I, I, I thought she had to, it's a new, so...
Yeah, well, we don't, she didn't know either, sure, but that's where they put it all the way to start with.
We got someone to collect, see as far as, you know, that one town, we had some...
Yeah, that was private collection.
Yeah, well, this state...
This is by state, okay?
So this hasn't been done before, or?
No, it's a new law. And, um, they'll probably have some success.
Some?
But then they'll probably drop.
If they get a tax refund, basically, we can get, we can get our fine out of the tax refund.
And those things never go away.
Yeah. So we need a motion to approve that. Got a bunch of wheel, second by Johnny, any other questions or discussions, all in favor? Any vote? Much of Carrie's. That's all we got. Y'all for coming.